Um, new issue later this month, uh, later this week. So that's exciting. Um, and also just want to highlight again, I think I mentioned it last week. If you drive downtown, the wires have been removed except for two poles now, and those two poles have to do with this equipment that we're in a shortage of, but it is quite noticeable now if you look that there's no wires. So that was a, a, a nice thing that we were able to move it to this point. We'll get the last two poles down, but you know, we're just kind of in wait mode on some of this equipment. So, um, just wanted to highlight that. And also I think the, uh, lights look wonderful, you know, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to really drive downtown. Um, obviously we need to have some conversations about, uh, budgeting through the budgeting process, what the town is going to be continuing to support and moving forward. Um, but I, I'm going to give, uh, some credit to the Dawn at the Chamber of Commerce as well as Aaron Maddox, our town planner with kind of being able to pull something together quickly. Given where we were with the bids on the bigger project and came up with, I think, a really lovely display downtown. So with that, um, I'll hand it off to any Lillies on reports of selectmen comments.
Uh, the A- the Academy Building Committee is, uh, awaiting some more detailed cost estimates. Uh, they will probably be available next month and, um, um, at that time, I'm sure we'll get a visit, uh, from the Academy Building Committee, uh, telling us uh, what they learned about moving forward at that time.
Great. Okay, um, so then I guess moving on, um,
I have something too Peggy.
Oh, you do? Sorry. Yep.
Yeah, that's okay. Um, so Board of Ed met, um, last week, uh, right after the holidays on the twenty eighth. Uh, just a heads up that trimester two has started. If those of you that have children, I think Peggy, you may have one in the school system, Jen as well. Um, so trimester two has started. Um, there was a lot of really good feedback about the exam schedule this year, and I guess the exams were done pre Thanksgiving and the student report that came through actually was super positive. Um, they'd sort of polled the kids and um, heard that that was a really nice thing. So, um, there's furniture now.
Parents?
Yeah, I know.
They didn't call the parents.
Probably stressful, but, um, uh, there's new furniture, I guess, now on the bridge at hand. Um, only half has arrived, but great feedback coming back from the students as well. And I think that the biggest, um, part of the report, uh, is that, um, we have been, uh, selected or given the honor of being number one in the state with, uh, all five of our schools, uh, being schools of distinction, which I guess in our history has, has really never happened, uh, or in many, many years. So it's a, it's a huge honor. Um, you know, these, this represents, um, as a school of distinction, you're the top ten percent in the state, which is a big deal. So we should be, you know, certainly, um, you know, appreciative of our Madison Board of Education, Madison Public Schools, just giving as many shout outs as we can to um, Dr. Craig Cook and all of the administrators for just an incredible job, uh, that this team has, has done. Um, I know it's been a lot of work, um, to, to get to this point. I mean, we had some schools, for example, like Brown going from a focus school, which was a number four out of five to a number one. So huge jumps in, uh, in what they're doing. So it wa- it was a big deal and, uh, certainly very proud of them. So I wanted to make sure I raised that today. That's it. End of report.
Okay, so talking about schools, um, it's worth calling out that on, um, the twelfth, the school will be having a public, um, uh, meeting, I will call it a hearing to discuss the, I think fifteen names that they've got for the, uh, new elementary school. So they're in the process of, of naming the school. They had previously solicited input from the community and took a big bunch of, um, suggestions and whittled it down to a manageable number. And, and so five o'clock on the twelfth. And that can be in person or Zoom. You'd have to go to the Board of Ed calendar to get the Zoom link. Um, and that will be at Town Campus.
See a lot of chatter on, uh, social media, Bruce, relative to that, uh, the, the names and the naming, you know, ideas and things like that. I know it was in the CT Examiner. So I think it's, uh, it's going to be a, uh, probably a well attended event, uh, so great call out.
Right. Well, it's all exciting to see this, uh, I think actually picking a name makes it the reality even greater, right? So, um, things take time, you know, and so, um, but we're excited. We're kind of moving things along. It'll be voting on some things later relating to the new school. So um, I guess with that, then we can open up for any, uh, citizens' comments.
No hands are raised.
Okay, great. There'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Uh, moving on to item number six, the consent agenda. Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Okay, um, any further discussion? This was probably the shortest consent agenda we've ever had. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, great. Um, item number seven, um, and I know that we have, um, some attendees from the new school building committee to talk about this, but I'll go ahead and read the motion and uh, item number seven is discuss and take action to accept the three phase one early procurement recommendations from the new elementary school building committee and to award a contract to Gilbain building company for procurement of the materials and products identified therein for a total amount of a million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars, including bid package twenty-three A, DOA unit furnished only in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars to modern mechanical bid package twenty-six A, switchgear and generator furnished only in the amount of four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars to consolidated electric and big package thirty-one A ductile water piping furnished only in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand to Gerber Construction. And authorize the first selectman to sign all necessary associated contracts and documents.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, great. Now, um, this was, we talked about this at our last meeting. Um, that this was a, a step in the process for the new school where we're getting ahead of things that they're going to need when they actually go through construction. These have long lead times and so, uh, I'll just let Graham speak to the package again and the good news that were, um, it came in a little bit more favorable than we had anticipated. So that's always good to hear.
Great, thanks Peggy. Um, good morning, everyone. Um, yeah, so this is like, this is a major milestone. So we had already due to supply chain issues in the industry over the last few years, some, some critical pieces of equipment were delayed upwards of a year or more. Um, in order to procure these materials, some of these, these materials in a timely fashion, we put together an early package to put out to bid uh, with Gilbain. Um, we identified the things that were in this supply chain as a moving target. We worked with some Gilbain and, um, the vendors to determine what, what critical pieces were going to be the long, still the long lead items. Um, we identified three packages that we felt were desirable, uh, mechanical equipment, uh, electrical switchgear and ductile iron pipe are still pushed in twelve months. Uh, if we waited until the normal construction schedule, we wouldn't be ordering them, you know, till we awarded, awarded the contracts to those trades and those would take, you know, they would push out the construction schedule uh, upwards of eighteen months. So in order to maintain our relatively tight schedule, fourteen months, we need to procure these items um, in advance. So I, I think, Peggy, I think you summarized it pretty well in, in the reading of it. Um, again, they did come in under, under our initial budget, which is a good sign. So we're hoping that the market is, you know, we watched this thing closely. I'm sure a lot of people in the construction industry watches very closely. You know, how, because we're going to go out to bid with the main package shortly. So I think we may be hitting it a good time. Some of the, some of the residential markets are slowing down. Um, so that's, I'm optimistic we'll get good bids, but I don't want to jinx us about that. You know, you don't know. Uh, right now the plan is to go out to bid with the rest of the package, probably uh, mid-December with an opening, um, in January, late January-ish, uh, the packages. So I think we're hitting it a good time. Um, did a marketplace. People are trying to figure out what they, what they're going to be doing next season. So, um, you know, big contractors are still, I hear big contractors are busy, but some of the smaller trade guys are getting a little hungry. So again, looks optimistic, but we, you know, with everything we, we could do, uh, to tee it up. Um, I think I mentioned last time that we are on budget. We did some initial round of value engineering to find that one, one point eight million dollar shortfall. So we were able to make some, uh, judicious cuts uh, without affecting the four classrooms or the program space. We work with Board of Education closely uh, to make sure they were in the loop on that. So I think everyone on the committee and the Board of Ed is happy with where we are right now. So we just need to go out and build it. Um, but this is, this, this motion is the first step um, to enable us to move forward with the project on schedule. And this was, this was pretty much always the plan. So I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Does represent groundbreaking here, Graham? Is that, is that almost shovel in the ground kind of thing?
Well, we, we, we deliver, we'll deliver it somewhere maybe in, uh, I guess you could do the ceremony, you know, come next September, you know.
Very good.
Okay.
Yeah, we're getting closer.
We're getting closer, yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, I think, uh, if no other questions, I guess I'll call the vote. All in favor of approving item seven as red, say aye.
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 Okay, great. Well, congratulations, uh, first, first hurdle. Uh, I'm sure there'll be more. There are going to be a lot more and a lot dollar, big dollar signs associated with it, but, um, all good stuff. So thank you very much for all your hard work to, uh, Bill McMinn also on Colliers. Uh, you guys have been fantastic throughout this process. So thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Take care.
Okay, great. And then I think Bill, you stay on for the next one, right? Yep, okay. So, uh, I remember eight is, uh, discussion of lot line revisions to Green Hill Road Campus to accommodate addition to facilities building at two eighty-four Green Hill Road and merge map sixty-four lot forty-eight with map sixty-four lot thirty-six. Basically, this has to do with the, um, addition that we approved at our last meeting, um, that was being paid for part of ARPA funds, um, to accommodate emergency management storage, um, you know, and assist with the sh- the shelter that'll be moving over there. But now we have to cut, do some cleanup on town-owned properties, which are all, were all these like different parcels um, that even though we're the owner of all of them, you still had boundary lines. And so we had to like clean a lot of this up to make it easier from a planning and zoning standpoint. So I'll turn it over to, I guess, Erin and Bill to talk about this.
So I'll turn it right over to Erin. She helped us, uh, put these applications together. Thank you, Erin. Uh, so we would comply with all our zoning requirements.
You're on mute, Erin. You're on mute.
Yeah. It's not showing you is on mute and yet you're.
Yeah.
So I can add live.
Hear me?
Yes.
Sorry.
I had, I was in meeting room B, so all my settings were off before.
All muted.
So again, as, as Bill indicated, um, I tried to give them a hand for the, um, new addition to the facilities building, which is a thirty by thirty, uh, foot, uh, one-story addition at two eighty-four Green Hill. In doing that, um, we realized that when the building was constructed, they obtained a variance for lot coverage. And, uh, so in order to add on, uh, we were hoping to avoid the variance process and demonstrating, uh, a hardship, really. So, um, given the fact that we own all of the adjacent property, uh, it made sense to do a lot line revision. And, um, the area in particular, I can show you, um, is, uh, all inland wetlands. Um, however, so, uh, this is the subject property, uh, where the facilities building is, the existing property line is here and, um, the lot line revision will simply move that um, to the south, uh, and create a new lot line here. And that will give ample, um, lot area for, um, the addition to take place without requiring any variances. When we were looking at, uh, this compilation map, um, as this is all one campus and, um, as part of the school, of the Munger Town School Project, uh, there was, um, the agreement to, um, to transfer some open space to the land trust. Um, so that's reflected here, the previous property line um, for this particular parcel forty-eight used to be along the center line of the Neck River. That is now coming to the east, uh, here. And so that is, um, the agreed upon property line per that, um, agreement and, and vote, um, for donating that land to the land trust. And the last piece here was that we realized, um, at the time of constructing the high school many years ago, the property line, um, between the two parcels is actually in the middle of the building. And, um, just to clean this up and make the, um, buildings, I think it was the intention at the time to merge the two parcels, um, but that was never formally done. And so a, as part of this lot line revision, we would be merging and eliminating this particular lot line that goes through, uh, the main uh, Daniel Hand High School building and lot forty-eight and lot thirty-six would, uh, be formally merged into one lot. All the addresses would stay the same of the buildings. It's just really to clean it up from a zoning perspective. So the process before you today, i- i- there's not a requirement in, in conversation with, um, council, uh, this is simply a lot line revision, doesn't require, uh, a town vote. We did want to bring it to your attention for, y- y- your, your approval, really. Um, and the, the only other action that would be required is because of the improvement on, which I can show you here, the improvement to the facilities building, this addition, um, is subject to, uh, an eight twenty-four referral um, per statute. So that would be the formal motion that would need to be made today is to refer that to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consistency with the P O C D. Any questions?
Erin, why wouldn't we consolidate all of the properties at the Green Hill Campus into one big lot?
The only, well, I guess that's a bigger question. Uh, there's a current property line here, um, which is in the fields, really. Um, and oh, this is actually, um, Jeffrey, i- i- there's, yeah, there's, we own multiple pieces. So this doesn't include, um, is it the La Sage?
La Sage property, yeah.
Here as well. And then there's, uh, the, uh,
Jeffrey School.
Jeffrey School property as well. And so I guess that may come down the line when, you know, a- as the school renewal plan progresses, uh, what direction, um, both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectmen want to go in. Um, we just looked at the immediate, uh, cleaning up of some of the, um, misses here on this one property line that goes through the middle of the building. Um, but y- you're right, there's really, you know, we, we own the Jansen field piece is a separate parcel. There's really no reason they couldn't be merged. I, I think that's just a, a greater discussion that we just weren't necessarily prepared to. Have you?
Erin, would merging all of those properties and, you know, into one, would that put us in a similar situation to what we just experienced with the, uh, Munger Town property where we would need like a wastewater treatment facility if it was over a certain size?
There is a wastewater treatment plant on this property for the high school, which is the whole reason, yes. And so a- and, and by law in the health code, um, any lot line revision or, um, addition would trigger a, uh, V one hundred A analysis to ensure that, uh, these changes are not essentially reducing any repair areas to the septic, um, for possible septic. And so, um, this, w- we did work in close connection with, uh, Trent, our health director to go through this and he did confer with the state uh, that the lot line revisions would not have, uh, an impact, but yes. So that, that is the whole reason why this property or this campus, I should say, is separated. But all of the properties that are owned by the town that are contiguous are, um, are considered with respect to that wastewater treatment.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so I guess that really leads us on to item number nine, um, which is what we as a board need to do in terms of a change of use, right, for, um, and so, uh, I remember I'm to discuss and take action to make a referral to Planning and Zoning Commission per CGS section eight twenty-four for the construction of a thirty by thirty foot addition to existing facilities building at two eighty-four Green Hill Road, map sixty-four lot forty-two.
Moved.
Second.
Okay, and this is just basically that process for the addition now that we would normally, i- it's change of use, right, is what an eight twenty-four is? Uh, uh, not changing use, but improvements, changes, something to municipal building, right? Not general maintenance, but an addition would be something that would trigger the eight twenty-four and as an improvement.
Erin, is, uh, is P and Z expecting this coming or we're going to surprise them with this referral, correct?
So the timing, they will, um, because the two eighty-four Green Hill Road piece was part of, and actually a part of a subdivision, uh, many years ago, the lot line revision is subject to their approval. Uh, so Todd Anderson from Anderson and Associates is making application to the Planning and Zoning Commission for both the site plan approval and the lot line revision. And that's anticipated to go before the commission at their December twenty-first meeting. So they would be expect, this is good timing.
Right. So this will all kind of go together, so.
And they already have inland wetlands approval for the addition. So this, these would be the last steps before a building permit could be pulled. Okay, great. So, uh, all in favor of approving item nine, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. We're getting there.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so, um, item number ten is discuss proposed revisions to the strategic, draft strategic plan. And I will, uh, we had a, you know, the public hearing in, um, or public information session or uh, in November, right before Thanksgiving. Um, there was a lot of comments we got back from the public about the strategic plan draft. We agree as a board, we kind of take a crack at like making some updates, changes to reflect their comments. And then we would then send it back to the public again. Um, and so I had promised at the last meeting that I would kind of like try to consolidate and then bring it to you guys. I unfortunately didn't get to it as quickly as I would have liked, but I did send something out yesterday afternoon. So hopefully when you clicked on that, you saw comments, um, and it was just making some word changes here and there and adding some things to try to reflect my notes from the meeting, which understandably that, you know, it was a few weeks ago, so I was trying to refresh and remind. And then Cheryl Trent, our consultant, had also kind of put a few comments in there right after the meeting, um, with her suggestion. So, um, the hope is that we would get something, um, available, uh, that we could post on Friday. Um, hold on a second. Uh, cause are, we, we tentatively, we've talked about another public information session on this on Wednesday, the thirteenth next week. So we would need to really get this out to the public by this weekend so that people can, um, look at it again. So, um, I think I could pull this up and we can kind of go through it and make changes live. Um, you could email me some changes that you want. And then I just need, I could try to put that all together, um, and, you know, get it finished. So I, I guess I ask you, I know it was a little, I kind of dumped this on you at the last minute yesterday, so I understand if people have not had the chance to really go through. So is it worth just running through some of the changes online if I pull it up? Or would you rather just do this via email? Um,
Do you want to just put a time limit on it and say we'll spend the next fifteen minutes? Kind of going through it quickly. By the way, the link is, looks like a clean copy. And the attachment PDF that you had is simply just got highlights in it.
Oh, my link took me to, um, one where we could read the comments and I was able to, I was able to add a comment of my own in there using the link in the email.
Yeah, there's a whole, yeah. Now I had that I had a problem when I was, I was trying to do this over the weekend. So, and I s- had a similar issue, Bruce, that you had. I wasn't able to make edits for some reason, but when I came in and did it from my work computer on Monday, that's when I was able to make edits. Yeah, so we're.
Well, maybe it's an Apple thing then.
I have an Apple too, so at home.
Yeah, and I, I did mine on an Apple laptop and it worked.
Oh, yeah, it's Wilson. It's Wilson.
Well, and me, I have the same problem. I was carving out time this weekend to do it and I got frustrated because I'm like, I can't make any edits. I can't. So that's why I ended up having to do it yesterday. Um, so, um, well, let's go, I agree, let's do fifteen minutes and then the rest we do via, um, email. Um, um, so the, some of these are like notations for formatting that, um, I think the substantive parts are later in the document where we get into the different, um, focus areas. Um, so probably on page fifteen, um, is really where we start having. And, and this is where I had most notes, you know, these next couple of pages, because this is kind of the big type of thing. So, um, so i- this is a little hard to do a markup on this, that I was a little, it was hard. So I highlighted, if you see like a whole line highlighted, that's me. And if you click on that, it'll show you what my suggested changes are. So, um, uh, I suggested as an outcome, because I did hear this recurring as a theme, as a multi-generational community. And that was seen as, um, you know, we want to make sure that we, to be sustainable and, uh, we need to have a cross-section of the population. We need to have a balance between, you know, an aging population, but we also want to continue to attract and retain young families. So I put that as kind of a big picture outcome. Um, and that was something I did hear a lot through the different workshops. Um, so I was suggesting that as an, a new outcome under here. And then I added some comments about, you know, in saying the words open space, right? Um, uh, so under preservation of natural resources, I just added and open space, you know, because that was called out several times. You don't talk about open space and we kind of do, but I just thought, okay, this clarifies. It's not just the natural resources, like saving the beach, but it's about just open space in general. Um, oh, I see Jen, you've added some stuff too.
Yep.
Um, and then I added, um, let's see, objective one point one modifies any regulations. I know perhaps amended to assess, evaluate amendments to allow for one point one. Perhaps amended to assess, evaluate amendments to zoning to allow for additional housing variety.
Yeah, I felt like at the public, um, information session that folks just felt like, um, there was a lot of conflict between our original wording of one point one and then also our outcome of preservation of natural resources and open spaces. Um, you know, and so just so that we could be more clear that we're not just going to carte blanche, go in and change things, you know, that it would be a mindful process.
I mean, I'm okay with that language. Um, once again, we don't want things that are perceived as, you know, going down a different path than what the intention is.
Right.
Um, I don't know, is the rest of the board okay with that, her suggested?
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that.
Okay, and Jacqueline, can you note some, me take notes on this? Is that okay?
Yeah, can you just tell me that was, um, objective one point one, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Change. Yeah. And then, um, and is everybody okay when I added as an outcome earlier on as, uh, multi-generally, multi-generational community? Because that's supposed to be an outcome we envision in the future, right? We want to continue to see young people and old people. Okay, good.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, uh, I added objective two point three under ensure stable financial support of Madison's visions. I add explore regionalization opportunities to create economies of scale and reduce costs. And I added a regionalization piece later too, but I think it's twofold. It's, you know, helping our budgets, but then it's also a good thing to do to share resources, right? So I kind of put that in there. Um, everybody okay with that?
Really? Yeah, that's great.
Okay. Um, and then, um, I added objective three point four. Um, which is, I wanted, that people wanted this called out, I think, and I don't disagree with them necessarily, encourage preservation of town historic structures and neighborhoods. So, um, and you can encourage it through, you know, incentives, but also maybe policy recommendations, things like that. Um, and then I also added, can you scroll up a little, Jacqueline? I can't see my last thing. This is the one page I think I had the most on, um, to the public. What does that add to the public? Oh, the accessible waterfront, so three point two, um, provide a safe and accessible waterfront. There was a discussion about, well, we're not going to be, you know, helping people on private property, right? I mean, I think of all, though, we are going to recognize we have a lot of shoreline, public and private, and we're probably going to have to do some big infrastructure things to preserve all the shoreline. But I think it's, um, that particular objective is more about making sure that the public has access to waterfront. So, um, that was the comment there. So I think everybody's good with those? Changes?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I think here I didn't, I only added a few things. Um, yeah, I had some notes on, um, adding one point six. There was some comments about making sure the volunteer boards and commissions have to follow the strategic plan. So this is just calling it out. I don't know if it's necessary, but I just, I had it in my notes, so I put it up there. Um, and then I added obje- objective four point four. Um, that's the regional comment. I put it modernizing governance structure. You know, I just encourage regional sharing of services with their communities. And then this risk assessment, assessment discussion we had, I thought it was kind of an, um, interesting concept, you know, to look into how we do risk, risk analysis, like we're, what is a bigger, greater risk to our community and try to have like a high medium and low approach to some of those things. Um, and so I just added it as a, as an objective to establish a risk assessment process. I don't know if that's too detailed for this, because I know Cheryl gets into a lot where is that a implementation thing? Or is that a objective? Um, so I don't know if you guys think it fits or not. 4.4. You're good with it?
Well, I think it reads as an objective. The way you've, you've, you've written it, it's, it's an objective. So that, that I wouldn't worry about that. Um, I don't think it hurts to be in there. And I think you're right. It's a, it's a little belt and suspenders, but that's okay, I guess.
Like a reminder almost.
Yeah.
It's stating the obvious, but.
Yeah, no, but I think it actually, we could create a, uh, like a grid or a matrix too. I mean, I think it would be a helpful tool. Right? Um, so, okay.
It reminds our, our town departments and things like that to prioritize too. I mean, that's a conversation we have a lot during the budget process.
Okay, good. We'll leave that in. Um, and then I think the only thing here was, this was people, we talked about the telecommunications stuff. So I just put track new television and broadband providers to improve service. So this was more broader than just self-service. That was a comment the public made. Um, and we know we, that is an important objective that we got to work on. And then the next page. I don't think there was any comment. This one, I was trying to capture a couple of things here. Um, uh, so I, the neighborhood business districts, this is where throughout the community. So I was trying to address this concern that we were like, everything's going to be a commercial zone now. You can put up I think people were taking it to another level during the public hearing, but I understand like it reads a little different. So I put it as, uh, that top one, changing it to thriving business districts supported by the community. And it's really going to be through the P O C D that we identify those commercial areas, right? And then there's the home-based business, which is different, right? And I think those were getting mixed up a little bit in the conversation. Um, so, uh, you know, I just was trying to make it not so, I think people, you know, here we were clearly talking about, you know, Main Street versus, uh, the circle, right? You know, but there was this obviously concern that this is a broader discussion than was intended. Um, and then I put, uh, the, the change to down under goal number one. And reflects the values. I put and reflects the values of the community. That's what it was just a wordsmithing thing. So goal number one, ensure the business development growth meets the needs and values of the community. And I just said, uh, and reflects the values of the community. Um, let's see. And then 2.1. Uh, I rewrote that 2.1 is ensure thriving business community. 2.1, I, I rewrote it to say, uh, the same issue that we talked about, identify preferred locations for business districts and promote with policies and regulations. And that's really going to be through the P O C D. Uh, once again. Um, so that was kind of my changes, I think. To try to capture some of these. And then Cheryl had a few. Uh, these are just more about, you know, the document. Do I have anything else?
Who actually makes these changes Peggy? Like who will make them?
So Cheryl will have to do it because they're working with their graphics person now. That's why I couldn't do like a red line on this. I had to do it with the comments.
It's a graphic.
There was that whole discussion about having a full SWOT analysis and rather than, you know, creating that whole full SWOT analysis. People talked about risks again, so I just added some of the note, I had taken notes of what people were talking about on risks. And so I added some things to the challenges side. And I added, people talked about the implementation. That's a risk we have that we don't follow the strategic plan. I don't know if we need to state that, but I just, I put it there. Uh, qualified workforce, I think is a huge risk because that's going to be a challenge for us. And that's kind of forgotten here. Um, the cost of climate change on capital plans and town operations. You know, this is going to impact climate change because of like a heavy rains, more flooding, our roadways are going to be more expensive to maintain. You know, we're seeing things. Our roads aren't lasting as long as they did. Um, so there's going to be a lot of big ticket things that the town is going to have to deal with because of climate change. Um, so I was just kind of calling that out a little bit more as a risk or a challenge. I don't know. Um, and then I also said, one of the challenges is going to be continuing to keep that multi-generational community, attracting, retaining a diverse and multi-generational community. Um, and then we had this whole conversation about public health a lot, but it didn't talk about the rising costs of that. And other essential services is going to be a big challenge for us too. So I just added those. Anybody have any issues with those ads?
I'm good.
Nope.
Okay, I, it presents a formatting challenge.
I know. I was thinking about that.
Page, right?
Yeah. Well, I think she could figure out some way to do it.
Spacing. I think she can play with the spacing.
Yeah. Um, if, if there's some advantages that we could balance out, I mean, you know, they're pretty broad, but, uh, maybe look at it and see if there's some other things we could add on a balance advantages too. So it looks a little more balanced. Um, so that was, that was the changes, I think. Right, Jacqueline? I don't think there's anything else that I got. That's what I kind of pulled together.
That's it. I'll just go through quick.
So why don't you guys, why don't we kind of agree to these, take another pass, send an email out by tomorrow end of day. If there's something we missed or you reflected and said, oh, I don't like that, you know, I didn't like that. Um, and then we'll just get this finalized and posted by the end of this week for a meeting next Wednesday. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Did you guys see that note from, um?
Oh. Sorry.
Does the land trust have an inventory of trails?
Um, I think so.
My understanding, they've used that number 35 miles, I think. Um, so they've come up with that somehow. Al, do you, the land trust, is there like an inventory? They must have an inventory.
I can get you a number from the land trust. Uh, Peggy, I don't know who can get the number for the town trails, trails owned by Madison. I can get you a land trust number.
I mean, just in Rockland alone, it's about 18 miles.
Yeah.
So the 35 miles feels, uh, uh, low by almost half.
Yeah, I agree, Bruce.
Okay, well, we'll double check that. I know that
Doesn't take into consideration the town? Is that why?
Maybe that's what we use the, I don't know what they used ultimately. So I'll look into it and double check the number.
I think it's useful.
I'm pretty sure that 35 had come from the land trust. So you're right. We didn't talk about the town trails. Good catch. So, um, we'll try to double check and see what that number is.
It should probably toss in the green, the greenway trail as well.
Shoreline Greenway Trail too, which isn't super long, but that, that should be added as well. Ham and acid.
Um, there was an email that was sent out, uh, back, uh, on the 19th of of November from Janet. Um, you guys probably saw that. I don't know if you guys took into consideration any of that feedback, but she was recommending some potential changes to the vision, the mission, and even some of the key focus areas. So it, you know, if we're looking at, um, you know, making these changes by end of day tomorrow, just, you just go back and take a read of that, that email. I mean, I think some of her suggestions are, are good in there too.
They're, they're good, but I will say that the vision and mission and key focus areas have been through extensive public, extensive public co- co- uh, process and discussion. So although I think she makes some interesting comments. You know, this is based on public information, visioning sessions, a retreat, you know, multiple meetings, um, that we've gone through them. So I think those are like big things that we can't really change now. I feel like they've been vetted. The wordsmithing of certain things underneath those totally legitimate award calling out, we missed like, you know, historic, we haven't emphasized historic enough. Those are fair game, but I would should argue that I think we got to put a stake in the ground at this point on the big, on the big stuff with the plan. But I'll take a look at her email again, just to see if there's some ways to kind of weave in a few things that, you know, stand out.
Like structural stuff Peggy? I mean, she was calling out things like the key focus areas, you know, why are we combining financial, uh,
We had a big debate.
Environmental sustainability as an example. So it's structural. So I, we, we may be sort of past the point of no return there where we can.
But that was, it talked about extensively by the SPAC. We had a lot of, and at the retreat, Jen, if you recall, remember we were all struggling with that, but at the end of the day, we landed that, that we were going to combine them. And, and actually the staff retreat also, we had a debate about it. Um, I think that has been a problematic one all along, but I think that the advice was we've made it work, like we can't go back and re-invent the wheel. So, um, and that was
Called out one about, um, thriving business and economy sounds a bit contrary to our desire to maintain the small town charm, perhaps. Uh, it's just the wording, but maybe it can be rewritten as support our small businesses and carefully manage economic growth. Um,
Well, if you want to suggest some language changes from her email, you're welcome to maybe email this around. Cause I, I was trying to
So I'll receive them. So you guys can look at it.
But I, I think I was trying to take what I'd heard at the public hearing and through the emails and try to weave it throughout the document. And I was going through my notes, but, um, so hopefully we did make some changes to those comments, but, um, so everybody take a look. And if they want to do any other, just, just end of business day to Jacqueline, can you remind me, she needs it by Wednesday, right? To get the graphics.
Yeah.
So if you can get it to us by, I would say, you know, maybe three o'clock tomorrow, that would be helpful. Okay?
It's just one last question though, just as I scanned her comments though, um, it, it's that notion of the small town feel. So do, do we feel like you know, that's captured somewhere in the strategic plan relative to, you know, obviously there's a, I think a, you know, a feeling of the town that they want to maintain that small town charm to some extent. Do we, do we call that out enough, uh, eh, to, to everybody?
That was a big discussion also at the retreat. Um, and how do you characterize that? Um, values versus charm versus feel? And we had a lot of discussions about that. Um, and that asked, is it in our mission statement? Um, so there was a lot of debate about what words were the right things and what they mean to different people too. So, um, um, I think it was talked about a lot, and I think that it was recognized as an important thing, but that can mean different things to different people. You talk to one person and it's like to me, living in a small town, as I go to the grocery store and I bump into a bunch of people and I know my neighbors, you know, to others, it's, you know, these charming little streets with, uh, local shops, you know, so it is really a, um,
Interpretation, right? Yeah.
Yeah. So it's hard. I just, and maybe I sound a little, I don't mean to not, um, respect the comments, but it's more just, it's been a, these, these have been conversations that started in June about with the focus groups and everything else. And she's trying to, she's tried to consolidate all of that in some of these words. And then we kind of battled about the words a lot at the retreat. Um, so, and I know Jen was there and Al was there. Um, and then the SPAC battled a lot about the mission statement and vision. So that was where, and then we changed that too, remember? We changed, made a few modifications. So, um, so anyway, so it's a process and it, it, you know, it's the 80% rule, good enough, right? Um, where we are now, but, but having said that, we can all take another read through today and like reflect on it and see if there's a few, you know, changes that we might want to make till tomorrow. So okay, so, um, so try to get those to us by like three o'clock tomorrow, so we can make sure everything gets, uh, uh, included in her final draft. And you, and hopefully Bruce will be able to, if you have a problem, get the edited thing. You have to make sure you're logged in under your town email.
Mm-hmm.
I think so. That might be a problem, although I was also, but at home, but somehow it didn't seem that link didn't seem to work. So, um, okay. So we'll move on to item number 11. Um, which is, uh, discuss and take, and I'm going to add the amount. I, I just received the dollar amount, so I'm going to amend this emotion to include that. Discuss and take action to enter into a five-year capital lease agreement with J B Morgan Chase in the amount of $337,669 for the purchase of the approved C I P highway equipment replacement schedule and approved police vehicle replacement schedule pending board of finance approval and to authorize the first select one to sign all necessary contracts and documents associated with the agreement.
Moved.
Second?
Second. So a question, this, we're entering into a capital lease. We're not purchasing the equipment.
Right.
We use the word purchase in the motion.
Uh,
is it, is it acquisition maybe a better?
I don't know. It's kind of how we worded all of these, haven't we?
Stacy's coming up right now.
Okay.
It is a capital lease, so we will, we will own the vehicles at the end. So we are purchasing.
But it's done over a period of time. So.
Okay, definitely. Okay.
That's what a capital lease is.
What I'm saying, I mean, I, I agree with you. We are ultimately
Not an operating lease, capital, the capital lease. So we do own them at the end.
Um, and then this is involving things that were all in the C I P schedule. So it's a, you know, there's three cars and, uh, one tr- truck. So.
It is, yeah, the four police cars.
Yeah.
And then, um,
The four, sorry, the four. Yeah.
Yep. And then one escape and then the van and then the truck for public works.
Right.
And then just if we can amend the motion, we are doing a four-year lease this round. We normally do five, but since the PD is on a four-year lease schedule, we just ended up doing it all um, on a four-year term.
Okay. All right. I'd like to actually make an amendment to my emo- my motion to, um, to enter into a four-year capital lease agreement with J B Morgan Chase in the amount of $337,669 um, for the purchase of the highway equipment replacement schedule.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. Um, so, and we've been lucky, we can get vehicles. It's getting better, but it's still tough. We'll just say that. Um, item number 12 is discuss and take, uh, action, uh, to approve selected revisions to the town personnel policies. Um, so I sent out, um, Monday night, I think, uh, a draft. This is the last section. We've gone through three chunks of this and this is the final section for personnel policies. Um, and you'll, you, you received a markup PDF. Um, and I think a lot of this is just driven by the conversations we've had during the charter review, which Jen, I know you weren't on the board, but I know you enjoyed for your entertainment to listen to the charter meetings.
I learned a lot.
Yeah. I mean, you know, procedurally, historically, the board of selectmen, according to the town charter, is the appointing authority. It has become a real problem when it comes to hiring personnel and it's quite, frankly, it's quite unusual. If you, a vast majority of the towns in the state of Connecticut, the, the whoever is the town chief elected official or town manager, um, are the ones that usually hire people, right? Um, and so, uh, but understand that some of these hires are strategic. So what I tried to incorporate in here is a policy that says any department head, the board will be involved in that process and the board would vote on the appointment of that because those are significant positions. Anything below that, um, it would be, you know, through HR and myself. Um, and it is a, in, in my view, a just administrative problem because we have to delay hiring of people at times because we have to schedule it around a board meeting. So people can't get, start their jobs until this gets voted on. Um, and, and it also puts it into a public process where people might be needing to give two weeks notice, but you don't want their name up there on the agenda, but we want to get the approvals done. And then we got to wait for the approval and then they can have their start date afterwards. So, um, so this was trying to take kind of the day-to-day operational stuff out of the board, but keeping it at at least more senior strategic positions. Jen, you've participated in some of those interviews, you know, um, and, uh, you know, a number of us have done that over the past. So that was kind of most of the changes in here was just kind of trying to update this with discussions we had at the charter level. And then I, then the thought was I'll come at the next meeting with a resolution. You know, that says that you would appoint, the board is authorizing me to do the, be the appointing authority for X, Y, and Z. And then we would vote on that and that can change. If there's a problem later, you know, 10 years from now, whoever's sitting in the seat and, you know, the board hates all these people, they're hiring their friends and neighbors and not doing a good job. The board can, you know, doesn't have to, we could make that rolling approval every January or whatever resolution. And then the board can just not give the, uh, approve the resolution.
Um, Peggy, um, I'm reaching back into my memory here. Um, do you think the language we're developing here is broad enough to include the special situation having to do with the police chief? Uh, my memory is there's some various state regulations and statutes having to do with, with the hiring of a police chief and what the role of the police commission is versus the role of the board of selectmen. I just want to make sure that the language we're putting in here is broad enough to accommodate. I just want to make sure that the language we're putting in here is broad enough to accommodate and that special kind of situation.
Well, technically, we don't have the authority, so I guess I just assumed it didn't need to be called out in here. We know by state statute, the police commission has the authority. But we could add um you know, uh, appointing authority under one point three. I I had added in accordance with the Town Charter and state statutes. We could just, and then that would cover anything that the, you know, Board of Ad, for example, we don't vote on their people, you know. Um, like, we might have a shared service person that we want to hire. It's just like, we went through this facilities director, right, but we can't make the Board of Ed take that person. They're gonna have to have their own vote. We're gonna have to have our own, you know, uh, uh, vote, so. Um, so I could expand that and just add state statute. That might kind of give us a little cover on that.
Um, it 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 does, Peggy, and I'm, I'm not trying to start a big discussion here this morning, but um the last time we hired a a police chief, there was a lot of discussion between the Police Commission and the Board of Selectmen as to um the respective authorities of both boards. And I guess a informal understanding was developed. I don't know whether that should be built into this, but that while the Police Commission has the final authority to make the hiring decision, they would not do so without consultation with the Selectmen. That was my understanding of what was concluded.
So i- it might have been, I I'm just saying, is that something that we can require in our policy, though, or is it just more of a, I think it's just more of an understanding that we've always worked collaboratively, right, with the Police Commission on these matters?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. I think that we don't refer specifically to, I I don't know, I mean, do you want to add something specific to the Police Commission?
State statutes thing, because then it makes it clear.
Okay.
Um, Peggy, I like the word you used, collaboration. Um, yeah, that is absolutely the right word here, and um.
Well, and I could add on to, so I'm looking at the sentence, because I'd like to get it just kind of ironed out here if we could. So the first sentence under one point three, appointing authority, so we're gonna say in accordance with the Town Charter and state statute, the word should be the appointing authority for the Town of Madison. And why don't we say, and uh uh we'll work um collaboratively.
In collaboration with.
In collaboration, like that better, with the, why don't we say the Board of Education and the, or no, I will put the board in it, but I'll just say with the Police Commission. On departmental hiring? In collaboration.
That's, that's good, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That'll avoid a huge uproar whenever we have to do that again.
Yeah, it's like, we can't make them, right, work well, but it's set, it's the sentiment that's there, right? Okay. So I'm good with that.
Right, uh, the only edit I had in one point three is um the notion of budgeted positions. If the Board is gonna delegate um administrative authority back to the Office of the First it would only be explicitly for budgeted positions.
Um, I I was thinking we'd put something like that in the resolution, but I can put it here if you want. Where would that go?
Well, it could be just um, Board of Selectmen may delegate all or some of this authority for budgeted positions to the First.
Okay. For budgeted positions, okay, yep.
That makes sense?
Yep. Okay. I mean, the rest in here is pretty um was really just procedurally, we have like this classification plans. You guys have always approved it through the budgeting process and everything, but we've never had um you know, uh maintaining it and all this other stuff, that's just kind of like administrative stuff. I think that was kind of substantive stuff was really earlier, and then the reviews, we added the um, so any, any other questions on this?
Just on, on bullet one?
Yeah.
It looks like it was originally may appoint, and it was changed to shall appoint. It seems to me that may appoint offers a little more flexibility.
Yeah, I think it was shall in the original. I think some of these mess got messed up, and I changed it to may, then somehow it got put back to shall, so that should be may. I would agree with that. The original of this had this, you had to do it, and yet we weren't even following half of it, so I was trying to make it less, I don't know how that got reversed, that might have been my fault. Okay. All right, so I think um and then Bruce, your comment in email, I I would agree, we have a lot of other policies, so if we want to do this working group, I'm, we could certainly do that, so. Um. Who wants to be on the working group for the Selectman Policies?
Well, I expected, since it was my idea, that I would be that it would have to be me. I I'm not married to that idea, but but um but I brought it up, so fair is fair.
Okay. Um. And I, obviously, I would want to be a part of that, since a lot of this has to do with the day to day administrative stuff. Um, so we could work with each of the departments. I know the big one in my view that's next is procurement. We really need to get that done, and Stacy just hasn't had really time to to deep dig into this, but um, so why don't we plan on tackling that one together?
Yep, and I was even thinking, um, at a much more basic level about sort of norms and expectations on how we conduct our business as a board. So it we it can be, we can expand it beyond that, but but I wasn't quite thinking that that big.
Oh, okay, okay.
Be more Board of Selectmen policies and procedures.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, right, we've got, there is a um a rudimentary set of policies around how we conduct ourselves and and the things that we do, and um, I think with the charter revisions now, we have an opportunity to update that and 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 maybe um capture some other thoughts that aren't in there.
And and I think to that point, we've talked about wanting to address the whole um, appointment process, right? You know, because I know we've had some ups and downs with that, and um, and I think following on the feedback we got from the strategic plan, people want to try to depoliticize that as much as possible, right? So maybe that's also part of that conversation with some recommendations about how to make that process better for the public, especially people who are not political per se, a member of a political party. Um, so, okay. Um, I think that sounds good. Let's uh, so if everybody's, okay, I've made these amendments that suggested I've marked them up on the document with the wording, and I will submit and get those done, and so I would like to make a motion to approve the uh proposed um updated revisions to the town personnel policies.
So moved.
Okay, Scott seconded, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great, all right, that passes. Um, excellent, um. Board of Selectmen liaison assignments. I had a list of these somewhere. Was there any uh anybody had requested a change, if I missed an email, oh, good. Uh, there was, we needed to update. Um.
I added um oh, this isn't the one, hold on, sorry. Give me one second.
Because there was something about the coastal resiliency, right, was not in the right spot or something?
Yeah.
The coastal resiliency commission should be under Bruce's name, not under my name.
Right. And and also, we agree that we don't need to vote on these, but let's just uh review it again. And I think there was the decision not to make any changes, right?
Oh, I didn't realize it was under your app, your name too, Al, sorry. All right, so it's added under Bruce.
Yep.
And I took off, I think, like ad hoc marijuana and ARPA was still on here. So those were what you guys talked about at the last meeting, so I removed those.
Yep, okay.
Like under me, though, like Youth and Family Services, I don't think we need to call out foamy and maid um specifically, we can, but I mean, there's no harm, I guess, but I would just keep it generic.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so this is kind of where we are now on these, and then, you know, as we talked about, if we want to um change or um add some more assignments or anything like that, we'll uh we'll, we'll um we'll do that. Okay. Um. And then number.
I just made, I I know we said this out loud before, but I want it on the record. I I I do think we as a Board of Selectmen have have gotten creative on how we leverage these liaison assignments. By being a liaison to an organization or committee or a board, does not necessarily mean that we attend every single meeting of those boards. There are different ways to do that, and I think, you know, it it can be as simple as liaising with the chair of that board and having a conversation directly. Um, it could be, you know, texting with that, with the chair or the the staff member. It doesn't necessarily mean um sitting in every single meeting. I just want to make sure we're all thinking the same thing, and that, you know, it depends on the board and commission, and depends on the person. So we have a lot of flexibility there, but I I just, I think sometimes the public thinks that, you know, our time isn't always as valuable either, and that we have, you know, carte blanche to attend every single meeting, and that's just not realistic.
No, I I I completely agree with you. We just have to, everybody has to balance it, and we have to have respect for people's time, and and I think if um uh commission feels that they're not being heard, you know, that's the, I think, the role of the chair is to make sure they connect with the liaison and have those conversations, right? Um, but uh, but I think it's, it's really just making sure that we have the right information and, you know, that we're advocating, or at least, you know.
Right.
Uh, updating our board on important things that might be coming out of these boards and commissions, so. Um, so I I I understood. Okay, so item number fourteen, I think we Scott had made an effort, I don't know if we do have a member to appoint for CIP. You were talking to somebody, Scott? The public member for CIP?
Yeah, we don't have, we don't have that member yet.
We don't have that number yet, so um, the committee can continue on. Like I said, this is kind of a symbolic representative for our board. Um, and the public is always welcome to to attend CIP meetings, and there's an opportunity for public comment. Um, so we just need to, um, and if anybody's watching this and is interested in being a public appointed officially, the process starts now, right, like this month. Um, so we would need that person to be appointed pretty quickly. Um, but um, we could always uh, so anyway, so if it's somebody and a member of the public is watching this, is interested in being that member, please reach out to the board. Um, and we'll keep working on somebody. And CIP, maybe Al, just to that, you guys start meetings, don't you? And uh, Jen, you're on CIP, right? That that's the, you guys start soon, so, okay. Okay, uh, let's move on to fifteen citizens' comments. Any hands raised? Jaclyn, anybody would like to make a public comment, please raise your hand.
No hands are raised.
No hands raised, okay, I had, it looks like we don't have too many members of the public on. Okay, um, and then um, item number sixteen, um, I'm I'm going to amend uh what's on the agenda, and I'd like to make a motion to move into executive session to discuss um item number one, Pacillo et al. versus the Town of Madison pending litigation, and and I'm adding item number two, West Worth Beach lease negotiations, and I would like to invite into the executive session um Deborah Ferrante, uh Cindy, um, what kind of last name, I apologize, Cindy, right now, um, from our uh law firm that's representing us into the executive session. Um, and uh Jaclyn, uh Leah into the executive session. Pardon, and Stacy Nobitz into the executive session. Okay, can I get a second?
Again?
Okay, uh, um, and just for the public's benefit, we'll be going out of it into executive session, we'll be coming out again um after we're done, and then you will be able to uh observe the meeting again, and then we will be adjourning the meeting. So all in favor of moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. So we will be leaving, there'll be a blank screen, I think, for the public uh while we are. Yeah, I just think, sorry, Cindy sees like like, so, all right, thank you.
Hold on one second, I just need um everybody from the public to leave, so I can lock it. So it's just staff on now, if all the staff could just leave the meeting, I don't want to kick you out, because then you can't come back in. Almost, Bill, Kristen, Sam.
Kick them out.
All right. One second. All right, everybody's out, I just need to lock it. Hold on.
And stop recording.
Yep, lock webinar.